So the first point on the agenda is, anyone here from the Mohawk Land Bank?
Yeah.
I'm Bob Albrecht. I'm the community outreach engagement and outreach coordinator. Whenever the land bank has something to do in the community, I'm sort of scouted. I'm the one that goes in first and I come back whole and the rest of us all. Tonight, I want to tell you just a little bit about what the land bank does, where it comes from, and how we operate. And I have a resolution for you. I will just pass this around. You may not act on it tonight, you may not need to, but let me tell you who we are. The land bank was formed in New York State, oh, let's see, about eight or nine years ago. We were formed in 2016. Land banks are a local public authority, just as the Truway and the canal system is a public authority, we are a local public authority. So we're not government, but we're made up of, we're created by governments, and specifically governments that have foreclosing authority. So in our case, the Herkimer County, Montgomery County, Sigo County, Schaefer County, all foreclosing authorities, and the City of Rome and the City of Utica have that ability. And they came together, they all agreed to a single memorandum, and that's what allowed the state to create us. So what we do is work with blighted properties. We can, we get access to that, help that blighted property, we might raise it, we might deconstruct it and move the building someplace else and bring it back to life again, we can stabilize it, and we can sell it way below market value, usually, not always, but usually, with a scope of work that says, if you wish to buy this property, these are the things you're going to agree to do, because we're not going to let that house remain blighted. You have to fix them, and you have this much time to do it, do you agree? And then we will transfer that property to them, with a scope of work. And if they don't fill that scope of work by our deadline, we can extend it, or then we can claw the property back. So we're not like a tax auction, where anyone can buy any property and do anything with it, including stripping everything that's of value. We vet our buyers, and we hold them responsible for whatever work there is that needs to be done, or we do it ourselves. We can sell a stripped-up house to the community. We do not use tax dollars. We do not receive tax dollars. All of our money comes from the settlement that the New York State Attorney General made when he sued the bank, they did all the damage in 2008, and won. And so our money comes from the settlements with the big banks. And it's interesting, I suppose it could have gone back into the general fund, but in New York State, that money does not go into the general fund. It gets distributed to the land banks, who then funnel it into the neighborhoods that have been destroyed. It's really, I think it's like Robin Hood, where you steal from the ridge and give it to the poor and you fix things up. It's a wonderful program. Now, the banks, however, while the money comes from them, they have a representative who manages us and manages the money. It's called LISC. And LISC insists that for every dollar that they give us from the bank, that we are obliged to raise three dollars in addition to that. So basically, the appropriations that come from the bank are only a part of the funds that we use. In the law that creates land banks in New York State, there is a provision that recognizes that need to raise the extra money, and it's called the 550 resolution. And this is what it says, that after a property comes to us, and we invest all of the money that we need to invest in that property to bring it back, put it out on the market, and have someone else buy it, and now get that property back on the tax rolls, and the property has increased value, we ask the taxing authorities to remit 50% of the taxes to the land bank for our reinvestment in other properties. The village of Kennebec Harry agreed to this, and they will be doing it when we sell properties in Kennebec Harry. And we ask, we're asking this taxing authority to do the same. Now, I have more to tell you, but before I do, do you have questions that you'd like to ask me?
Is it 50% of all taxes?
Oh, the taxes on that property.
Or the increase from when it's blighted to...
No, whatever taxes you're receiving from that property. 50% of that property.
Is it forever, or is there a tie here?
Yes. And in many cases, the properties that we take, no one's been paying taxes on them for years. They may be owned by the county, or maybe no one knows who owns them anymore, or maybe the bank owns them and is doing nothing, and as they own their property, it's beginning to fall down, they do usually pay their taxes. But it's not just the tax that contributes to the welfare of the community. If you have your students, where am I? Let's see, yes, I am in the school district. If you have your students living in these houses, in the house that has decayed, or on a block where the house has decayed, their quality of life is torn down. It's not what it can be. And you know that, as you watch, as you go through the town, and you see some blocks where you have a blighted house, and a good house, and a good house, and a blighted, and a blighted, and then a good house, every time you see, if you live on that house, and you can, that street, and you can see a blighted property, the value of your property is decreased by $10,000. That's what happens. So our children, if we can build up these streets and have better neighborhoods, they benefit, and anyone who owns a property within eyesight of a blighted house, they benefit as we lift everybody up together. So what other questions do you have?
How many buildings have you worked on in this area?
How many buildings have you what?
Worked on in this area? Hi, thank you. Todd, I'm the executive director, and Bob, you know, usually does this, but since I'm local, I wanted to come and back him up. We have right now 34 properties, and we have plans to acquire roughly six more in the next few months. We have two in Kennebec Harry, one, if you know where the Tire Shop is, 153 Erie Boulevard, which is right next to the Tire Shop, and, trying to think of, oh, the Hope House, which you may be familiar with, down on Mohawk Street. So, right now, we're doing a lot of the hazmat testing on those, asbestos mitigation, lead, things like that, but probably in the next two to three months, we're going to start rehabbing the Erie Boulevard house. And the Hope House, we're actually working with the county to hopefully convert into a visitor center for Underground Railroad people that are interested in coming to see, learn more about that in Kennebec Harry. That was kind of like a special case, because that house has a historic, significant historic impact, and so the county historian and the county executive worked with us to take that on. Yep, but for example, in Fort Plain, where we already have the 550 with the school and the village, we have 12 properties, and we're starting to rehab four of them next month. So we have a one-year turnaround time, which, from acquisition, we try to have them back out on the market and fully rehab within a year. And that's a self-imposed deadline, but we have an agreement with the county that essentially pushes for that. And, you know, we're also trying to get, we're focused on low and moderate income families, so that they can get into a home, especially first-time homebuyers, so families can get into these below market rate. And there are stipulations, depending on the grant that we're using, between five and 20 years, that they have to meet certain requirements to keep it, you know, up to spec and not get code violations and things like that, or they have to pay back some of the money that we invested, but the hope is to get new families into it.
How long do they usually have to do the rehab, that list of stuff you give them?
Every property is going to be different, because the condition of the property is different, and it would be a term that would be mutually agreed with the new government.
Typically, no more than a year. Typically, than years.
That's it, was that it? Thank you very much.
All right, and you have left the resolution.
And we have, we have posted it.
It was going around.
Yeah, but we also have it posted, and we have posted it as well.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks. Okay, so I'd like to suggest, if you, everyone is agreeable, that we put off the student representative, so I have to go into the rounds, so that we can entertain our visitors. Is that okay? Is that okay? All right, so you're on.
Thanks, appreciate it. That's a tough act to follow. It's a pretty cool program. You should have in your work packet a letter of recommendation on the five contracts that were taken last month. And the good news that I have is that compared to a lot of places that I've reported on recently, we're able to award the contracts. They were all under budget, and we're able to proceed forward with the project that we put forward to the voters, and are able to do pretty much everything that we promised. So the five contracts are general construction, and we're recommending we go with music failing contractors, mechanical construction, Tom Kellygood out of Troy, New York, electrical, ELC Electric out of Troy, plumbing construction, can...
Can I just interrupt for a second? In case anyone is wondering, where are these, does anyone have them? They're under the other part of the agenda, under J, which is capital project contractor warrants, if anyone else can, so they can follow along with you.
Thanks.
Okay, we all have wrote that?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
No worries. Plumbing construction, we're recommending we go with Hamilton Plumbing, and for site construction, we'll MJ Keller out of Castleton. So in addition to the base bid amounts that we're recommending, there are five alternates that the project is able to absorb and pay for within the budget. Those are a couple safety items, cross corridor doors, and blue lights on the outside of the building. There's a health item for nurses' office ventilation.
Do you have this listed or something?
Yes, it's here.
It's part of each contract.
It's called a bid tabulation sheet, summary, summary of contracts.
Under approval.
And then on the recommendation letter, Scott, there is a proposed alternate that we recommend for each contract. And then for the site contract, there's two alternates that we can award, one for the D zones, which was for graphics in the D zones, and then we've got a kind of a mushy shop foot area right now, where you can't find shop foots there.
There?
There. So we're firming up the earth there to help make that a little bit easier to go. And that's the basics of it. Does anybody have any?
Can I just say, we had a discussion, obviously, about this in the building of ground, of committee, and the way that the alternates, we were unfortunate, we got low, we were able to use the low bids for each contract, and they were vetted and by the oversight firms, as well as by our architects, and it was agreed that they were comfortable with the bids they gave, that they were reputable outfits, that they could perform the work. And then, based on that, we had savings that were, so we were able to pull in some of these alternates that we kind of left to the side, not knowing where the bids would be. And the way that, again, this is just summarizing, the way that the alternates were chosen, the ones that would fall within the budget, and were also deemed to be the most important to do, that we could also afford. So the ones that were not, were not taken, and you see, you can tell from those, because they have zero all the way across, obviously, were ones that were either too expensive, or we viewed as a lower priority. And so that basically summarizes everything that went into these decisions. And so right now, the total that we will be expending for the capital project, we were allocated, we were, we have $3.8 million to work with, and this comes in just under that, $3.7 million.
It leaves a healthy contingency for the project to help mitigate any unforeseen conditions that have experienced current course construction. And we've set aside a healthy incidental allowance to cover RFEs and all the soft costs that get associated with it.
So I'm assuming I didn't say anything wrong?
No, that's right.
All right, so are there any questions or comments?
Are the blue lights the emergency lights that you see on college campuses?
It's a notification system on the outside of the building that will notify people if there's an event going on inside the building that they shouldn't enter.
Such a little lockdown?
A little lockdown.
The Neillis air conditioning units?
Mm-hmm.
I thought initially that was, there was some discussion that they were absolutely rusted.
That was something that we included in the scope of the project, anticipating that SED might comment on them, because potential ventilation requirements. We submitted that to the state, approved it, and because of the cost of it, we couldn't recommend it.
So are they in good enough condition, or are you like that?
No, those are in good condition. It was just a, it was just a code that we thought we were going to do. They work fine, probably even more durable in the near term. We're pretty happy with the way they look.
I don't see the elementary school air conditioning stuff now.
No, it's not. That was never part of the project.
So what's the...
That's a, that's a different conversation, yeah.
But I want to know if it's going to be covered. I understand it's not in here, but it's something that we've talked about multiple times. Where is that being discussed to be decided?
That's not part of the project. Gary and I have had offline conversations, and we are still checking on the power.
Right, we checked on the units.
We checked on the units.
I need mobile units that need to purchase. And I'm trying to figure out right now whether or not the building has enough power to do it for everything.
Because quite honestly, that's more important than some of these other things, in my mind. So, and we just aren't answering that, so in my mind, I'm prioritizing what our district needs, and I think that's much higher on the list than some of these things that we're adding in now.
Well, they were, we'll have to go back and talk about that, so they were never part of the original project design.
I understand.
Right, so that would be an offline conversation, or a separate conversation, that we could have, and then get back to you if the rest of the board is in agreement. Or look at how else we could do it. Is there another way?
And the asphalt walkway, is that the one from the middle school up? Or is that doing something with the walkway?
No, the walkway was an asphalt walkway that got requested by, I don't want to go into a lot of detail, a third-party reviewer that was looking at our documents, and they suggested an asphalt walkway around the track to access field events. So, when you're looking at the oval of the trap, the part that looks like a D on either end is grass today, and we're infilling those Ds with asphalt, and actually putting field events in the Ds. So one end has a high jump, and I think the other end has the triple jump, but they get paved over, and they get rubber coating, the same as the rest of the track.
Okay, so the D zones in the shop, specifically for the track?
So, yeah, and the alternate price for the D zones is just to put graphics inside of the D zones.
What he means is there's going to be a C on one end, and then a candle written out on the other end of the D zone.
Right, so you're making it look professional.
Yeah, that's the 95 number, that, that's the 95 on the shop foot area, because I'm not sure, in the foot shop today, they're going around, and sometimes you can get them out sometimes.
They're from relics.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much. We can't wait to vote on this, you know, when we get to approvals, but we appreciate you coming up and your patience for our taking this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you. Thank you also. Okay, so taking away students.
So normally, I would, I just say my concern is that Mrs. Grimshaw answers in here, but we thought it would be more efficient if she gave you the answers beforehand, than I present them all to you. So, more, students were worried, because hopefully we don't have to worry about this anymore this winter, but we had some temperature warning days, and students were like worried to work or to walk from the side door to the front entrance, because the side door is faculty. And Mrs. Grimshaw said that if the wind chill temperature is 16 degrees or below, then there can be an additional staff member designated from the door, or at the side door, to let students in. So that is consistent with the fact that this is the district, the 16 degrees, so that's the first thing. And blowing and suicide awareness was brought up, and we have a Sweetheart and Heroes program that will be on our schools on March 21st to address that subject, and if I have anything else, I can talk to Principal's cabinet to have other programs come here. And then this CSI students were concerned about the access to Unity, which I know nothing about, but it's an online program that they're doing a project on, and I was notified that this has nothing to do with our high school staff, actually, it's just technology. People have to figure out the security issues before they can deal with it, so there's nothing we can really do about it until they're done with that. And then I just wanted to let you know that we had a drug awareness presentation, and Planned Parenthood presentation, and it worked very well. I'm glad we had them. And then...
Will you up to March?
Yes, March. I, I'm sure you already know, but we had a panel of students that were able to question the superintendent candidates, and I thought that was very cool, so thank you. And then concerns, some classrooms...
I'd also just like to say that the student responses on the floor is very thoughtful and helpful, so thank you as well. And please pass that along to the other students.
Okay, I will, thank you. Some classrooms are much colder than others, and I was wondering if that could be fixed. And I was, I didn't know that all classrooms have a set initial temperature, and teachers can change the temperature as they want, so if the classroom's too cold, the students can just ask the teacher if they have it set to the temperature, and if not, just notifying Mr. May, and we can look into it to fix it. And then keep up on cleaning icy sidewalks in the parking lot. The staff does keep up on them as much as they can, and it's just sometimes the weather makes it really hard, but if there's a very bad spot, just notify Mr. May, and he will do it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I want to make sure I understood what you said. If the temperature isn't set properly, a student is supposed to call Mr. May?
Not directly, call Mr. May. It's if the teacher says that they don't have it set to a lower temperature, but it is too cold, then I, someone can talk to the high school office, and then someone, like a teenager or older than us, can talk to Mr. May.
And then my, my other question was on the drug awareness and Planned Parenthood presentation. Can you tell us the forum, how was that held?
Yes, there were professionals in different, like, subjects of drugs, like some were opioids, some were tobacco, and they were a panel on the, in the auditorium, and they just gave presentations on each of their subjects, and the students were able to ask questions. And then we learned a lot about, like, the dangers of it, and everything. And then the Planned Parenthood one was about healthy relationships, and how to know if you're not in a healthy relationship, and they gave, like, a hotline for if you need help.
And was that to all high school students at once, or...
Yes, almost all of them.
Anything else? Please, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so next we have the building of the grounds, so which we besides, I don't think besides the capital project, and that really kind of covered that, that basically all we discussed, I believe, and then the, so we go on to the education committee?
I would ask that the AC for the elementary school get a press.
Yeah, I, here's what I think we should do, we're going to have to, we'll go, we'll do a couple of things. I suggest that we have, we'll have, I'll talk to Gary about having someone come in and make an assessment about our electrical capability, and do a cost for us, and then I'll have to talk to Eric separately to see, the project has been approved as is, what's our flexibility, if the board agrees, to lock, to move something in and out.
As we've mentioned, that is, we just don't have an answer back.
Right, we have, we have, yeah, it's been a few months, yeah. We have, Gary has identified the air conditioners, and obviously, the capital project takes up a lot of time, so that's why I'm saying, let's get some other resources. And Gary, come help.
I just, do you think you would roll in, because it is costly, or electrical infrastructure, or whatever, I don't want to miss the opportunity.
Sure, but let's find out the answer to those two questions, and what is our flexibility with an already approved project? Okay, yep, I wrote down.
I understand when we were discussing that earlier on, was that there is something that you're thinking we have to go and check.
Right, yep, just want to double check, that's all.
Okay, so next is the education, anything else on building the ground? Okay, education.
I'm trying to get my computer straight.
There's some notes up there, I just...
Yeah, so the education committee, this last meeting, the large topic on the item, the large topic on the agenda was math, and that was the two things I was talking about on the agenda. High school math, in terms of the pathway or mapping of curriculums, and how those courses, how the courses we offer, what pathways there are to go through, the math sequencing, and what alternatives maybe we should have. There was some discussion about the results of our students that go through accelerated algebra, and how they may have difficulties transitioning to geometry, and we talked about potentially sequencing of those courses, looking at what a couple other districts do, so that was a large portion of that.
Let me also just add, we also were talking about ways that we assess students, you know, the students' progress, so that we can have an accurate picture of where they are at and where they need to be. Because if you just make assumptions... Um, because if you just make assumptions, it doesn't always match where they in fact are in terms of the math, you know, literacy.
And along those lines, um, one of the things that we acknowledged in a part, as a part of that conversation is maybe some of our, um, previous mechanisms to figure out or assess people, we need to go back and readdress because we might not, and it might have gotten lost along the way. So, we want to get that back in order and along with the other things I said. Just who should go to what math class next, that kind of stuff.
Students.
Students, right, the students.
And, and the other concern also with all of this discussion is to kind of re-energize the math program so that more students will be stimulated, first of all, capable of and also interested in, um, taking no more advanced math courses, both because it's, it's a useful thing to do and also it can be helpful, especially if they're looking to take the S A T exam, they're just to get into college or something. So, you know, it's, it's, we just really are starting the conversation and we'll hopefully be coming up with some more, um, you know, useful ideas and solutions.
So tactically, Mrs. Countryman has already met with Mr. DiPaolo, working on some things. We've employed the use of our math department chair. And on Monday, she will be meeting with me and Miss Leeson to have some further conversations. I've also been working with her and Miss Lowery on some of the other pieces. So, there's things happening in the committee, but the tactical work, which is really the, the boots on the ground work, happens, is happening outside of the, the committee as well. So, the purpose of the education committee really is that idea of a think tank, of a all brains on kind of thing, and then some of the work happens outside of it. So, this is an example of how we are implementing that concept.
And the second item, the benefits of the, is for one agenda.
Yeah, I guess.
So, I don't kind of think we need to cover that.
Okay, any questions or comments on education?
Um, is it okay if I have a recommendation, could we further, um, for the math part of that?
Sure. No.
This might sound silly, but if we could put together like a training for the math teachers to like help students that aren't inclined to understand math better? Because I think math teachers are obviously math people, so they might not understand people that don't understand math as well. So, they could like.
Like a different math?
Like, I don't know, just.
Yeah.
A training to teach it in a way that's not so just this, this, this.
Translative. Innately math capable, because everybody can learn math, right?
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, okay. Yes, because math is a language, I've heard.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Olivia, anyone else? Okay, let's go to the board.
I put, I started putting check marks on it for things that are items that are completed. So, um, hopefully, the board is in, going to be very successful soon with contract negotiations with a new superintendent, so we'll be looking forward to that. But I did give my check mark because I think all your hard work has paid off. Um, and so hopefully that process will be closed soon.
I would like to just add.
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
I've been, I've been in touch with, um, Chris Landchamp and I'll turn, and the negotiations are ongoing. We'll be discussing them more specifically in executive sessions tonight. But I just wanted to indicate those, the procedure going forward just. Um, what, uh, Chris Landchamp recommends is that we first reach an agreement on, on a contract and that we then will have a, can have a special meeting both to approve the contract, where it's signed, and officially, um, appoint our superintendent. So, I just wanted to kind of give you the framework that we're looking at. And I think we're close to that point of, um, we'll see after we have our specialists.
Our area of safety, we have our school and building safety committees and we also have our district-wide threat assessment team. Um, we are still working on, or on the list is still the target mentor program. And then the restorative circles, which is part of safety. You had asked that Miss Leeson provide just an information of where the high school faculty is based on some data she's collected, so she's prepared just to step in and that.
So, I know we talked about it before, but just as a recap, we had a presenter who was a trainer for the International Institute of Restorative Justice come and do an overview of faculty meeting and just to give people some basic knowledge. And then on the day the kids were released early during Regents Week, um, they, she came back and she did a two-hour workshop, I'll call it, um, that provided more specific information on circles. Um, in addition, we've had some teachers who participated in a book study, um, reading the, the Little Book of Restorative Justice in Education, um, which obviously also connects back to the idea of circles a lot. So then what I asked people to share was three ideas that they had for incorporating restorative practices at the high school. And so, now that we've done some preliminary work and gotten some information in terms of the, the circle aspect of it, most of the information people gave was in relation to one of the types of circles, even if they didn't identify it that way. So, that's sort of how I categorize it, because there are academic circles, which you're doing your content, but you can still practice that format of a circle in terms of the communication and how you set it up. There's proactive circles, which are things you do ahead of time to, to try and, you know, build community in your classroom or, um, get ahead of something that might be going on. And then there's restorative circles, which I think we would normally think of with it, which is the, something's happened and how do we sort of rebuild and, and reconnect with communication? So, um, to give you some examples of things that people included, under, under academic circles, I put, um, some of the responses were by forming circles with students. They'll be more comfortable expressing themselves through words, um, to help the, under kids, it's help the kids understand the lives of others, learning to listen and ask questions. Um, and then there was a suggestion about students doing a writing prompt before a circle so they can be preset. Um, under the proactive circles, um, keep, someone mentioned peace circles, almost as a form of a club, so that students could have a way to discuss how they might be supportive of each other in different situations, um, come up with several instances of poor choices or poor behavior to use as examples and then discuss, maybe even in the sense of restoration versus zero tolerance was one of the examples they gave. Um, classroom circles to build community, to touch base with students to see how they feel the class is going. Um, students are able to connect to other students through conversation. Collaborative classroom agreements to give students classroom ownership. So, again, like a proactive way to get everyone involved in talking about what the class should, should look like, sound like, feel like. Impromptu circles for relationship building or clarifying a misunderstanding. Show students the human side, so for an adult maybe to share when a mistake is made, recognize and own it, so students see how they too can own and remedy their own mistakes. Um, model and teach community values. And then participation in the community as a requirement, not an option. And one of the things you learn about circles is that there's a sequential option, which means everyone in the circle at one point has to participate.
So, these are all suggestions that come from staff?
These are from staff. I broke them down into the three types of circles.
Okay, fine.
But they're all suggestions from the faculty.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the last one, the restorative circles, um, teacher, student, administrator circle to discuss when a student is removed from class. Um, another one was to talk about how the behaviors of one or two students can affect the dynamics of an entire class. Um, with discipline, having conversations between the student involved and teacher to find the root of the problem. Conversing about what is happening can prevent future issues. Um, somebody suggested having peer mediators that would support, provide guidance and maybe plan to repair harm within a student group. Um, making sure all students know they are accepted after making mistakes or there's a situation. Um, enforce the values and hold the students accountable. And then a teacher suggested using the restorative questions with, um, a student to help understand the situation. And those are what happened, what were you thinking and who has been affected by your behavior? So, those were some of the different ideas that people have.
Questions?
What was the attendance?
The attendance at?
At the workshop.
Uh, everybody was.
It was, yeah, it was a two hour, it was part of that.
Yeah, it was part of the, uh, we did it as part of Regents Week. So, if everybody was.
Right, it was a two hour chunk. The kids were dismissed and then faculty lunch and then it was the end of the day for the beginning. Is it early?
That was, that was also during Regents Week, but I don't think we had anybody score it. We also have it video and I don't know if we've shared it, I don't think we've shared it with you, but we had, she allowed us to have it video. We have it on our private YouTube channel, so I could send that to you if you were interested. Let me write it down though, so if you don't write it down, they'll forget us.
Can I also suggest that the list of suggestions, um, was on, on Google Docs?
Yeah.
I could share this afternoon.
Until date yet.
Okay.
My other question was, um, how have we reached out to gather concerns people have with, um, restorative justice or process implementation, etc.?
I, the biggest thing that's been shared with me and some people, when I sent the, um, the ways we could incorporate it, shared that concern, they just felt like, obviously, a two-hour workshop on circles is not enough to make people feel comfortable facilitating circles. So, if this is the direction we're going to move, we need to make sure people have more training. Because a, a number of people, as part of their comments, said, if, you know, they felt confident doing it and that the confidence was a big part, um, and being able to sort of navigate through the questions and just the setup. And again, it was a two-hour workshop, which gives you a good overview and gives you an idea of what it can be like. But in order to do it yourself, whether it's, you know, as I said, proactively or restoratively, you definitely need more training. So, that was a big thing that came back. Um, and I think the other thing is, um, just the notion that this doesn't replace anything else. This is in addition to what we're doing now, right? So, when a student has a referral, we process that referral, we go through that process, that doesn't change. You know, the goal is if you use proactive circles, it may eliminate some of those issues. The hope is that if you use restorative circles when something does happen, especially something that's a little bit more, um, interpersonal, that you could resolve it at least from that point forward.
So, did we specifically ask, that's a specific question of the one response is, did we specifically ask, what are your concerns about this?
No, my question was, what are ways you could see incorporating it? And people indicated, like I said, as part of it, that, you know, if, if we had some training, this circles could work like this. And as long as the other stuff that still is in place, it could work like this.
How many people were involved in this thing?
Um, we had eleven people just doing this thing.
And that's all high school faculty?
Yes.
So, is there a general consensus as to how people feel about it? Or is it too early to tell because they want more training?
You know, I think I've heard from various people who have tried, who have experimented with circles in a classroom, some academically, just to get that conversation going. And some people who have said, like one of the examples they read, all right, guys, something's going on in here. What is it? Let's have this conversation. And they brought the kids together in sort of an impromptu circle to have that conversation. Um, and so I, I think people are willing to try it. I do think the overall vibe is in order to do that, we would need more training.
So, my question, my next question is to Debbie. Um, what, I mean, since we're in this exploratory phase, what has been the cause to our district for this exploration? Well, we are fortunate, I don't know, uh, I can get you that information because we've had Melissa here a couple of times, so I would say maybe around, I don't want to say, you know, because I would be happy to get back to you on that.
Okay.
What I will say is this, a few years ago, we were part of a college ready writing program. And with that, we were a pilot, we were a non-participating pilot for the first year. So, we were able, we got paid, not just paid. So, we had that pool of money, so we're using that pool of money because it is available to us to help support some of this training. It really, um, I will, I will get back to tomorrow because I just don't remember what it is. Um, but it's not out of line for training that we send other people to. It's not, it's not anything that is, oh, my gosh, like that's so expensive.
No, I was just wondering how, so I guess where I was going with this is the cost, just in general for her, for the books, for, for other conferences and related to this as a whole, and what it would be going forward.
Right, yeah.
I have a question for you. Have, have students, have any kind of discussions about this? If so, have they, or have not?
I haven't really.
Well, luckily I would suggest that that do take, that does take place so that students would be both aware of it but also knowledgeable about it.
And we've talked about that in part two. In order, the, the, the students need some training too, you know, and the idea of what it is and that. We've talked about it a little bit at Principal's Cabinet in terms of sort of what the function of it is, but we would need to make sure that the students have that concept too.
I think we need to ask the same question in a negative way. We asked, how could they apply it? I think we can ask the other, what are your concerns about pursuing this?
Just a bit of story. Okay, anything else?
All right, we'll go on to the next other few areas. On curriculum and instruction, the committee, our secondary schedule committee has, um, compiled all of our relevant data. We have looked at Schedule one, two, three, four, five, five A, five B, five C, I don't know, somewhere in there. We're trying to keep them all straight. So, right, we're on six now. So, what we're trying to do is proto, is looking at the prototypes against, of different schedule configurations, against the benchmark needs that, that our surveys, um, have established and some best practices. And I will say a lot of the best practices really says, um, the best schedule is whatever meets your district needs. So, the good news is we have that first part taken care of. So, um, we are looking at a variety of options and this is really the, really the prototyping and discovery phase. If you were thinking more of, of kind of like a design, uh, process. And we will come back together and see what fits well, what doesn't fit well and what future iterations we have to do. So, that group is working really hard and in a tip, and what I would say is a very consistent process of, of teams that are starting to work really well together. You go slow to go fast. And so, we did a lot of legwork and now things are coming together. Um, under our parent and community volunteer, we have an update tonight of a, I'm going to ask Miss Ward to share with you our update tonight.
We're gonna slash in color and some fun for Susan's Hill. This is a very early draft, but you can certainly see the elementaryness in it and see more. Um, because Debbie hasn't had time to look at it yet, so it very much is still a draft. But what we did is we did that, we did a survey for our staff in the fall. And so, I took the information from there and worked with Sarah. When I think about some of the volunteers that we're targeting, um, our two volunteers now, so our volunteers now, our two wonderful older women, retired women, or some are retired from, through a religious affiliation to one of our teachers that has come. And so, I know people still like paper and so that was our target demographic and that was stuck. Um, and just as an anecdote, uh, one of our volunteers that we acquired through that program actually is Mrs. Bunny. She is Mr. Anderson, or, you know, she had a partner named Mr. Anderson Bunny. And those will be Mr. Anderson Bunny at Family Fun. So, one, we volunteer, turns into a.
Sure.
And a bunny team. So, we're very excited to get that to the family. But to be, on a more serious note and certainly dovetailing with the safety, we do have our application that we, our lawyers have looked at, that we adapted from multiple schools that we had acquired. Um, it does do a driver's license, we took out the social security, but then I meet Jason and he does the investigation for me and now we do an orientation. The area that I'd like to pivot and focus on is also what does orientation or is our training like, you know, after you volunteer the year, do we have a breakfast or a lunch and do you get a pin? Like that type, to really say thank you as well, uh, because it's, I mean, again, how a few visits to a Friday morning turns into Mr. Anderson Bunny and it's, what's the word, symbiotic or what's both?
Yeah.
And it's been a classic, yes.
Any questions or comments on that? I just have to look through all suggestions.
Please.
And I think there should be a phone number in addition to an email address for people that might not. I'd say you'll see a phone.
Yeah, no, we should be following. And I think we need to get employment under the dislocation. We were just trying to say we don't dislocate any one who wishes to volunteer and I think that's the important. Well, I definitely have.
But it looks, looks like a great start.
I, I just wanted to confirm, so it's a K twelve, pre-K twelve program and you're going to be in charge for the whole program?
Well, I didn't know, it seems like I'm having to leave it.
Well, I didn't know, it seems like I paid him to leave at the moment. I'm having a chair or handed off.
Just wanted to confirm what I was reading.
This kind of looks very elementary.
Yes.
It does.
I think we need to talk about that.
Yeah, we need to, we need to talk about that, yeah.
And then my second question is, if this is a pre-K-12 program, how are we going to market this to, I mean, the tri-fold is a really good start, but how are we going to market this to our community, our parents, et cetera? Because those are people who want to come.
Right. We are adorable.
I mean, the good news is, high school students go down and volunteer too.
We like that, yes.
So they're experiencing, from that angle. Our next reporter.
I just think, I just think it's very exciting that it's starting to be followed, it's really being installed, and up again as a welcome of the school.
Okay, under budget, the, one of the things we had discussed this year was making sure that we are budgeting and looking at things related to our vision, mission, and value statements. Our staff did a great job of indicating such on our budget request forms that we hold in our office, and as the finance committee continues to meet, we will circle back around to how do the expenditures that we have for next year help to meet those things. So I did that as a check, because that's operational, that's moving, and we'll continue to work on that. And you'll hear a little bit more about the budget and the finance committee next. The last area is the area of technology. So we are implementing our one-to-one professional development plan. We are still awaiting approval from SED. We are trying to find out what is going on there. We are accessing every avenue we have available to us, because interestingly, out on State Ed's website, it says, when you get to expenditure review, you should expect to have significant activity with State Ed reviewing your expenditures. We've been sitting in expenditure review since September. We have had no contact from State Ed. So we're trying, and it's incredibly challenging to get someone to find out what's going on, but we keep working on it. The other thing we're doing though, while we are waiting, is the professional development piece, but we also are going, and this is coming from the finance plan, when we do get approval, as you will remember, the SSIP is a reimbursement program, so the district has to outlay costs and then get reimbursed. So we, our plan is for a little over $400,000 at this stage of the game, and you'll hear about it when we talk about the budget next, it would be very challenging for us to outlay all of that money at once and get reimbursed all at once. So Mr. DiPaolo and the tech committee are now tasked with, and I talked to Chris just about this this week, and I think the tech committee meets again soon.
We have to schedule another, because the last one got snowed out.
Was that the Wind Day?
Yes.
I think the last one was the Wind Day.
Wind Day.
Please, Mother Nature, stop. But anyway, they're now tasked with creating a rollout plan. So the committee's going to establish that for the district, and then we're, again, we are talking to our folks at NAREC, I'm going to see who else I can get ahold of, I'm going to, I'll see our district superintendent on Friday. I want to talk to her about how she might help us just find out what's going on, because it's kind of, it's like it goes into the great hole, and when you're supposed to be having communication with State Ed, there is none. So we're going to work on that.
I would like to make a suggestion, that we reach out to Senator DiPaolo in Abidore, and let's go into, to go through some data.
Yeah, I mean, do that, yeah.
Chris, I have a question on the one-to-one professional development and implementation. I know we've talked about it, but I don't remember the answer. Was the, the technology, um, work on curriculum rolled into the professional development implementation, or is that another phase?
Some of, some of the online PD can be catered to specific content areas and curriculum areas, and some of it is general, just for the platform or for a specific application. So I guess it's a yes and no. In the PD plan, there's, it was a hybrid of both onsite and off, online. The way the, in trying to schedule the onsite things, we're running into lots of conflicts just around New York State testing, AP testing, Regents testing, where we're, we know teachers are in private rooms. So we're actually looking at some summer solutions where we could pay people to come back into professional development either close to the end of the year or in, close to the beginning, start day of the year, to get that rolling. All of the online accounts are, as of Friday, active. Now I have to assign them app to people and start assigning curriculum. We have not even approached scheduling any of the smart professional development that's specific to the smart boards, because ultimately, not only do we have to get that SSIP money approved and get those purchased, but the install of different buildings takes different, it's a much different process up here because of the metal studs in the mall, for example, these mine and Stacy's building, where they can literally just retrofit over the block. So that's going to kind of be the last part that kind of comes along once we have the notification of SSIP being approved.
So is, from the face-to-face, is that where curriculum design and stuff is being worked from a P and D perspective?
In the ladder face-to-face. The initial face-to-faces, especially for the Google Chromebook implementation for one-to-one, is really geared towards bare-bones, basic operation, and then once you get to the online platform, there is some of that curriculum development, and then the follow-up one is really how do you now, now that you have a basic to intermediate functionality used for this device, how do we use it to change curriculum meaningfully in the classroom?
So with that, I would encourage that, assuming State Ed comes through and we have an implementation plan that's real, that we look at not doing it just before school starts, because the possibility of having any curriculum integration component is probably going to be really slim, because schools are starting.
The other thing I think that will be helpful over the summer, as soon as we see more, is that Kyra Durham, her first job comes from there, in her second year of a one-to-one implementation, so it'd be great to get some new world experience and one of the problems and, you know, things that need to be overcome for it to be successful. I think there should be a real dialogue, once we officially appoint her, you and he, Chris, because maybe it could be helpful in, you know, pre-identifying some of the difficulties and issues.
And on the positive side, with Ms. Gresham on Tuesday, she actually checked the SSIP kind of bank, and at the end of last, middle of last week, they did approve schools. So it's not sitting dormant because of the situation in the state government, state budget. They are approving schools, we just haven't made the top of that list yet. And my guess is, like Buffalo City Schools was one that was approved, and my guess is it was probably sizable, and then even smaller schools like Grandville is on the approval list, so there are schools currently being approved, so we just have to.
Anyone else? So we are moving on to budget.
Yeah, you want to start with the overall?
Start with the overall, so then we'll go over there.
This is the most current budget sheet. As you may or may not have heard, the finance committee that passed, and we got the health insurance and they were not pretty. So what the budget shows right now, yeah, is an increase in health insurance by $450,000. On the previous sheet, I believe I had $250,000 in there, so I'm going to increase that, another $200,000. And that's really the only change on this sheet right now. We're still looking at both these expenses, and we're going to be finalizing that next week, hopefully, and then have a set of proposals, and then the finance committee will sit down again and see what we can do.
On this one, the last round that we did by school isn't included, the building.
How do you do any increases yet?
Right, that's what I thought, yeah. So there is another round that we've walked through that's not incorporated into this yet, but it's very small in terms of impact and the results are. Maybe we should go a little bit along with it. This, this is definitely a difficult budget at this point. We are in a significant deficit, over 1.3 million right now.
That's our deficit?
Yes, that's what we're pulling from reserves. And that's a, that's a 6% increase year-over-year, so that can tell you that spending is going like this, and there's going to have to be some change in it. We're working through what those changes are and what we can do about it, but it's a big difference.
Do we have enough?
We do, but then that sets us off.
What do we?
Oh, we, I don't remember the exact number, but. So this would basically take half of our fund balance, which means we'd have a horrible problem next year, which would be that way. So that is not our discussion, we're trying to find alternatives so that that's not the answer.
One thing I'd just like, and I shared a dismal communication with everyone, but it was late this afternoon, that was a little bit of a possibly a hope, because this is based on the governor's budget, and both the Senate and the Assembly are, have proposed something that's 1.2 billion more than what the governor proposed. And also, another thing that's encouraging is they are also opposed to some of the things we want to do in terms of cutting back on building aid formulas and reimbursement formulas for schools. So, you know, I think we won't really know the full picture till April 1st, but there's some hope that we won't be quite, not that we shouldn't be conservative, it may not look quite as dismal as it does now, and just keeping our fingers crossed. And we'll need to, I think, kind of get on our legislators and ask them to do it right there, and not just to take no for an answer from the governor.
So we're working this hard, and we'll go to the next one, you want to go to the health?
This is a summary sheet that I put together. It shows the total financial savings in the over the past six years. If you do some math, they've pretty much almost doubled in six years, and that's just the thing that helps. And then that greatly affects what employees have to pay. So the employees' contribution rates for next year are increasing on average 6% by 60% of what they're paying now.
Are we in a health insurance consortium? We're in a trust.
We're in a trust, which is a little bit different than a consortium. There's some financial obligations with a trust that operate differently than a consortium. Yeah, but an overall 27% increase is what the vote came in to us as, so this is a big, it's more than what we had in the budget.
And it's significantly more than, well, it's over twice what the increase was last year.
Correct.
And so just as a point of some information, the way a trust works is it's based on our utilization rates. So for our region, those of us who use New York 44 through MVP, this is our regional increase, so it's based on where we are within the trust. On Monday, two things are happening, just some information, the trust is having a health insurance town hall. New York 44 is a little different in that it also involves your bargaining unit, so Leah and I will be going, hopefully, I don't know, maybe someone from the bargaining unit will be able to go too, so that we can all find this information out together. And then in the afternoon, we are reconvening our healthcare committee. So there's a couple of things.
Where's Tony, what time is?
Yeah, Leah and I are going, it's at Fulton Montgomery Community College in the morning. Now they come.
For sake of reference, because I don't know, what is the difference between the trust and the consortium?
A trust, you actually have legal obligations as part of your, you're a collective group from a loss perspective, and that's always the case with a consortium. So there's legality differences, which made a difference on how much financial obligation we would still have to the trust if we don't need it.
When did we get these increases, I'm assuming relatively?
When did we receive them?
Last week.
Last, last Thursday, I think.
Have you, have you reached out to the union to?
Yep, I met with Chad that afternoon. I think it was Wednesday we got it. It was Wednesday, so I met with Chad, it will stay on Thursday, Leah and I did, we see each other.
So we, we don't really know what our options are there?
We're working on it. I've also been in, I've also talked to New York 44 MVP, our representative from MVP. I've talked to one other, I've talked to another superintendent of another school district, Leah's talked to a representative at a college. So we're trying to talk to some other schools to see what's going on. We're trying to explore some options and to see, I have our representative asking a couple of questions for us, specifically about withdrawing or not withdrawing, just like how all that works, because we do need to give them a 12-month notice if we, if at some point in time we choose to withdraw. We're just trying to figure out what the process is from here.
Are they giving us a deadline?
Thanks.
For making a decision on this?
It has to be 12 months.
12 months, so.
There's also some other options within the trust, like we're in option A, there's other options within that are already in there that we can give to employees.
And one of the things about, we're also looking at, there's a penalty if you withdraw in less than 12 months, and we're trying to figure out what that would be, because it might, it's not significant enough, you might decide to make a move sooner, if you figure out what a good move is.
So the healthcare committee will, would have that kind of responsibility, that's a broad-based committee of huge faculty, huge support, and non-union representatives, so it's everybody's covered by health insurance. So we've already established several presentations that people are going to come and share information to the committee, so that they have that information, just to start from what's out there. And is this an increase that other people are experiencing or not?
That was another question I wanted to ask.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, yeah. And it depends, it's huge, but what we're finding, because we've talked to a couple of other districts about that, it just depends on your plan and the type of plan, whether or not that is a significant increase. It appears that this is, but some other insurers have had this increase earlier in a year, in a bubble year, and then it's starting to level off. But this is on, I mean, clearly, this is unsustainable.
Yeah.
So we have, we're trying to look at short-term and then long-term solutions. There's one other, again, that, long-term debt.
Third attachment is just information, we questioned it before, but this is just a long-term debt schedule, sorry to interrupt, our bond, which is already in the budget, is already included on that big budget sheet. As you can see, this is the last year that we're paying two of them, so two of them will come on for next year.
But again, just for long-term fiscal planning, one of the things you want to do is organize your building projects for when bonds come off because then you don't have a dip and a spike to your taxpayers. So if you know you have things that need to happen, you wanna, and we've done that with this, you try to make it so the timing works out so that you can replace one with the other, and that stabilizes things over time.
Any questions?
So we'll continue to, we're gonna continue to work on this. We'll continue to give updates as we, as we go. It's an everyday project.
Thank you, Leah. We went on BOSI's annual meeting.
That's just an informational thing. We just got the notice. So you should, I don't know if you've gotten it home.
Yeah.
Right, I will need to know by next week whether you are going or not. I need to let them know by March 21st, so.
So...
If you're going.
Is this the retiring CEO or new CEO that's running that here?
Anita Murphy will be there as our interim. She's the interim HF BOSI's superintendent, so she will be providing that information.
Just for your visualization, back to that question on the, the process of hiring, BOSI's superintendent, and they have four, five of the candidates. They still have to go to the state education department. And so they have four candidates that have been really good candidates. And she's very happy about, oh, this is John Powell. Four candidates. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll hear from you, have to, as a superintendent.
Next Tuesday, the district superintendents are going to interview the final candidate. So we have a whole day of interviews. They've invited us to participate. So I'll be at BOSI's on that day participating in those interviews. Search is confidential, so we won't be telling you any information about anybody.
Anything left on those BOSI's things? Need to approve votes? I'd like to ask for a motion for a dissent agenda, but I just can't put it to you. Is there anything that they would like to call out for a dissent agenda? And the vote in each point, is there anything? For instance, there's a resolution on the North Valley Land Bank. Is anyone comfortable with that?
Sir, there is no way to vote, but I can't vote for this.
Is there anything that people are willing to take out? Okay, so I would obtain a motion for a consent agenda and approve this. Now the second? Okay, so we'll start with minutes. Was there a mistake in the February 14th minute?
Yes, and I corrected that.
Okay.
So the new one is posted. I caught that. I had put up the down one.
Is there anything besides that correction?
That anybody else? There was a lot this month, so it was quite, it was like, trying to keep up with that.
Yes, it was.
So did anybody catch anything else that...
There was a button.
Yes, so on that, too. Okay, the one. Okay, bills. Any questions on bills? All right, well, I will see. I have a couple of, 56, 615, East Bay Basket. What do you find the basket for?
It's for basketball. I don't know exactly what it was for.
It was $2,000.
Alcohol basket.
This is a broken plan.
Yeah, it was so...
You'll form forward.
I don't know if it was a car, like a car seat or a...
Don't find out specifically.
Then I had another question, 56, 630, nobody resources? 630. Mr. $21,000.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, it must be for elementary, but... How about exactly? I was to get back to him. I'm ready.
And then MVP, 56, 639, MVP Select Care, what is that again?
That's the, our dental.
I knew I'd seen it twice for that. And then there's a check number 3749 to T Equipment, for PD one-year sub, what is that?
That's the professional development that we bought for Christian over...
Tech Equipment is TEQ. That's the firm that we purchase our smart boards and some other technology from, but also the person that we're contracting to do in-house and onsite, or excuse me, the online professional development.
For smart boards?
For smart and the Google Chrome, the Chromebook implementation.
But then aside, nobody is, nobody is...
But they're nobody.
They're nobody, or they know, they know.
That specific charge for the equipment, that is the full faculty online professional development suite for the year, unlimited access, all CPL approved.
Yeah, we put that, we put that as one of the title grants because we could use that, because one of our goals in, what this was related to, one of our goals in the federal title grant. So we use that to that money.
I think, I don't know. 56669, Benestar Hartford? I just... That's our retiree hospital. Oh, okay, that's fine. I just didn't know.
I have one question where it said install a scoreboard. What scoreboard?
It's a scoreboard that we bought, like, over the summer.
Softball, soccer. It's out on the cutting hand field. They, what they did was they bought a softball. We've been asked for several years by our softball fans and soccer fans to have a scoreboard. So we purchased one. They were able to, they were able to put in the cement posts so that in the spring it can be installed. So they, we paid for all of that. It's ready to be installed and as soon as the snow goes away, we can get out of there. Oh, is it in all right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. It is in all right because the day we had the wind day, it stayed stable when we had the high wind gust day on that Monday. So it is in and ready as soon as we have. Oh, and it rotates. That's right. I forgot.
Any other questions on bills? Okay, moving along, treasures reporting, questions? I promised I won't be specific, but I'm just thrilled to see over 2% on some of our accounts versus two hundredths of 1% on the ones that are not, have not been switched over. So it's, you know, it's, we're talking thousands of dollars versus $50. So it's very encouraging that we actually might see some improvement. Without getting specific.
Is everything switched that can be switched yet?
The bigger moms are, we can actually now, our MVP rate one up after 20L, the MVP rate one up. Is Gina Edmond, do you say that was the, like, insurance thing? She's Jennifer Money Market. On the treasures report?
Yeah.
That's our Jennifer Money Market account. That's where the majority of our state, whatever goes into that.
Anything else on treasures? Anything on budget transfers? Okay, anything on the extensive BOSI subjects?
And that was from February, too. Yeah, there's nobody out there.
Okay, moving along to calendar, any questions there?
I just want to clarify, I think you said this before, that this is gonna match the HF BOSI's calendar.
Which is matching the cap regent calendar primarily because of the next gen standards implementation to make sure we can take advantage of the regional going along the throughway training.
Do you have any, are there a lot of superintendents or any superintendents sent in from this? Are they all pretty much on board?
No, we're all pretty much on board. At least as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as I know, this is what at HF M we all do.
Sometimes it's hard, you know, there's always a, oh, we want this and that.
Yes.
So this, just refreshing myself on my station. So this is the first day in August. The end of August is our first day for teachers.
For teachers, correct. As per the newly negotiated contract, as suggested by the bargaining unit at the education committee, which we agreed to, yep.
And the first day for students would be Tuesday, the third?
The third, yep.
And what was the flex day that we had in here in case we run over three?
March 20th. March 20th. The two days that are critical for the next gen implementation are going to be October 15th and November 5th. And just to note, November 5th is also election day. And one of the concerns we've had is having voting and students in the building at the same time. That eliminates that concern. And we still hold on March 20th would be our own professional development day. However, if Mother Nature decides to be crazy again, that would be our flex day.
Anything else on the calendar? Okay, next, we have the two contracts, South Colony and Rainbow Central School. That's been under as far as I can see. We're obligated to pay that and provide the students with the cost of their services.
Those are for students that we send out. Those are for district residents, district residents who attend private or poor field placements. So if you go to a CDA, if you go to another private or poor field school. Those districts, pardon me? The district has to pay for a portion of the healthcare cost for the district of location where the private school is located. So those schools receive health services from, oh, wait, like Socia Glenville? So Socia Glenville can backfill us for a portion of their services based on a stated obligation. Just only health services.
It all goes to the cap division to show here. Moving on, are there any more questions? Okay, Nellis Fund Expenditure. Any questions there?
It's coming directly from the Nellis Fund. So last time we had talked about the expenditures, Mr. Sutcliffe provided us with the quotes for some things in the repair. We have the original documentation about the Nellis Fund and its establishment. These are according to the information that Leah has, appropriate expenditures for the maintenance of the pool. So now I have the quotes to go with.
So this is the pads that we're talking about.
Yep, it's the touch pads, yeah. And the blocks, the starting blocks and the, and the pads, the tiny pads.
Okay, we got a minute. This is on to North Valley Land Bank. Any questions or comments on that?
Looks as they kept, like, that was a big project.
Yeah, that's his capital project.
Oh, I passed that, oops, sorry. Capital project, any questions or comments on that?
What do we have to do?
We have to approve the contracts. And again, no...
The question of the selection of...
You approve the bidder, yes. You approve the vetted bid list of contractors for the five contractors that...
With the question of the flexibility. Any questions there? Okay, now on to North Valley Land Bank. Do you know what it's at? Killing off Bud Road for the tax?
What is Bud Road?
Oh, wait, there's, there's a resolution up there.
Okay, so we received, we received information from the Town of Canada, Harry that they would like to make Bud Road a limited access road. Sorry, give everything to the town, hold on to it, I don't lose it. Thank you. And what the Town of Canada, Harry is asking is for the school district to also agree with their determination. I talked with Mr. Kongbir about it to make sure we do not have any students who lived on that road or that that was an issue for bus transportation. It is not. We do not.
Moving on. Okay, shared services report claim regarding the nutrition director. Do you want to speak to that?
Leah's gonna speak to that a little bit.
This is an agreement of Portland to contract with Portland instead of BOSI's for our school.
School manager.
Yeah. So I looked at some numbers and is, do you take out the aid that we received on that service through BOSI's? It's still a cost savings for next year to have to just pay for a claim.
So one of the things that's happened in the past couple of years is that as we originally had an agreement just with Mrs. Dolan Brody, the district then looked to take advantage of BOSI's aid by making that a co-serv service. Then it became a larger BOSI service, so then there were some overhead costs involved with that that made it more expensive. So we went back and took a look at the numbers and Leah and her counterpart at Portland have been doing all the work on this on determining that it is just as, it's a cost savings for us just to contract with her between two districts and remove the BOSI's from it.
Do exactly the same.
Do you do exactly the same thing?
Just we're taking care of the in-house.
Yes, yes. So the big cost with doing it, with coming off a coaster from BOSI's is always the aid that you receive. So one of the things that you might find interesting is that for people, you can only receive aid on a certain percentage of the salary. So it's not like some other services where we say, oh, we get 72% aid on this. It's a portion of the salary. So in this case, that cost savings was, was not really...
Yeah, for 17, 18, we only got 43% aid that was...
I think we're saving more than 43%.
We're saving, it almost comes out to a wash, but I think we're saving like $5,000.
We're saving, it almost comes out to a wash, but I think we're saving like $5,000. Which I'm going to put her, um, that contract, you know, for a, for a wash on this.
So when they're going to be on the Portland paper. So we don't have control, we don't have the cost changes. It's not our person.
Right. Yeah, only six.
Because I saw their, their load is almost 40%. So I don't, I don't know if they're, um, it doesn't read like they're taking a percentage to manage the contract. It reads as though we're just pulling that.
Correct. They, yeah, that, our relationship with them and other districts is really just a straight split of cost.
And I know this says that it's for one year. What happens if we don't continue this with Portland to our ability of being able to have this service of the district here?
Would that, would that reduce the contract?
Oh, I know, but let's say that Portland doesn't want to do it anymore. We can't pick up 100% of this person.
Correct.
You have to go back through.
We're only saving $5,000.
Right, we'd have to go back through BOCES or figure out, you know, what we got for that.
And that would mean BOCES would pick where they want to service this, correct?
We have had a longstanding relationship with Portland and Mrs. Dolan Brody. So I can never say never, just can't guarantee anything. But our track record in this regard has been very good.
Do we have any insight into the difference to the employees from leaving BOCES employment and coming to district?
She's, she has been a part of this process.
Yeah.
She's on board.
She'll actually be here tomorrow.
It's just not a lot of savings. If something goes wrong, we basically, for a wash, each one.
Yeah, nothing will be changed.
Tax cap calculation. Any questions there? Also 3.5.
That's our max.
That's our max in taxes.
And what is the purpose of, purpose of this? Was this information to us?
I had to file this for the state. So this was filed as being our max.
Okay, moving on. Manual budget hearing notice. Any questions there? I would just make a note that the budget hearing will be on May 9th at 6:30. I would just put that in the calendar so that we can plan to be there.
I think it's a, oh, that's a Thursday. For the board meeting.
Wait, but that's not a Monday.
Oh, all right. Oh, that's, oh, okay, that's when it was last time. Okay.
No, I know that's Thursday.
I just got a.
It's Thursday. It's Thursday. It is Thursday. May 9th is a Thursday.
Yeah, 6:30.
Yes.
Yes, prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting.
I just wanted to encourage people to put that in the calendar.
Is that what you said?
So you need to change it on that.
Yes, we need to change it on, hey, you need to change it.
It hasn't gone, it hasn't gone anywhere, yeah.
Maybe we decide to do it.
How, I didn't decide.
We almost did that.
We haven't decided then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the budget calendar.
On the budget calendar.
We did. Because.
So people rather have it on a Monday?
If it's out in the morning.
Before the meeting or an extra meeting, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yeah.
Before meetings or?
We should wait to decide. We did the budget calendar.
And it was within the time period.
Where, where are we posting this?
It goes in the career and recorder.
Let's see, I see.
Career standard and then we'll post it on the website and on our social media.
Okay, so do you believe this has any prior to the board meeting?
Do we have the ability, yes, I'm sorry. Do we have the ability to now direct the people?
Yes. We could do a robo, yes. That's a great suggestion.
Any other questions on the budget schedule? You know, and continuation of the combined sporting program for play, wrestling, swimming, cross country, football and volleyball. Questions there?
Yes. Volleyball, how did that go?
It seemed to go fine with the combined teams. We actually had to add a coach because with the two schools, we had increased participation.
Yeah. I don't know anybody on the volleyball team. I had heard that some of our players maybe didn't get as much playing time this year. And it was always a lot, did anything?
I, that's it, I did not, that's not for me.
Because I know that was one of the things when we talked about merging and was how many students would we actually have.
Right.
So what did that actually mean for you this year?
I don't really remember because that's volleyball. Volleyball numbers.
Well, they have volleyball numbers here. It says application for regular league. So it looks to me like Kinnajahary had seven varsity and eight on JV. And it looks like Portland had the same, if I'm reading this correctly.
Beginning of the year.
Because Kinnajahary won.
Correct. Ah, the numbers, okay. So how many are on the volleyball team?
Six on the fourth.
Six on the fourth. So we have, we were, we have 14 on varsity and 16 on JV. 10 and 12. So do you make this real good? Who is the volleyball coach?
Is the coach, because we didn't have one?
No, that's the, the.
No, that's the.
Oh, no, I think, if Nicole was one of them. Nicole is one of the coaches.
Oh, yeah, right.
JV, yeah, Linda Cole coached JV. The coaches were from Portland. I know, I do. And I can't remember the varsity, which is name right now. I've met her several times. I apologize.
Do we, just because, I think this was our first year of mercury, wasn't it? So I guess for this one, I'd kind of like to see the projections again because that was the basis of making that change. Where we plotted all the students out.
Yes.
I'm going back to the opportunity discussion that we had, right? I'd really just like to confirm that it's still the right thing versus that was a bubble that we had.
Right.
A need for a couple of players and now we're going to have people that can't do it.
I don't see anything on here that's modified either in terms of how many kids play.
Yeah, for merge, for, for merge, we can just, we can just pull in it. For merge scores, they don't do modified.
For which?
For the merger, they don't include modified numbers.
Does that mean we don't do modified?
No, we did it. Yeah, we did. It's just for the mergers at the JV varsity level.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we want to reconsider that volleyball next time. So I would ask for a deal that we will pull P out of the consent agenda?
Yes. Oh, you want to pull up all of it?
Oh, just the volleyball.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is that a deal?
Yes.
So did that being said, anything else on, on mergers? Okay, a motion was made in executive for consent agenda minus the volleyball. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stay, A, volleyball, I will take a motion to table it.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, okay, thank you. I would now entertain a motion to go into the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion? Yes.